It says here, the meeting will become, will be come to order. This is a study session of the City of Ashland City Council on February 2nd of 2015. The first item up is fifteen minutes of public input. And I have one form. Nobody else wants to speak? Okay. So, that's Eric Sarotkin. Eric?
Thank you, John.
Five minutes, Mayor?
Yeah. And, um...
We can talk this out?
Yeah.
Before it starts running there?
I'll hold my finger up.
So, when you're ready, give your name and, um, address.
Okay.
And then, uh, you're gonna give them...
Is that part of the five?
One-minute warning?
Yeah.
Yes, it's part of the five. I figure, "How hard can it be?" Eric Sarotkin.
We'll get that down.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm Eric Sarotkin. I'm at the 2026 Ashland Line Road, Ashland, Oregon. If you could have one chance to speak to the world's most powerful political body, what would you say? When Václav Havel, the former political prisoner and then-president and playwright of the Czech Republic, got an invitation to speak to a joint session of Congress, he spoke to them about the salvation of the human spirit lies nowhere else than in the human heart, he said, of our human world. He said, "It is in the power to reflect, and it is in human responsibility." He told people that we have to be responsible for the state of the world. And he says, "I am responsible for the state of the world, not only to the world, but for the world, as though I myself were judged for how the world would turn out." A culture of peace, you have materials on that. I had, um, five minutes on a culture of peace. I'm gonna skip that a little bit. But as you know, it's been come up, if the culture of peace has arisen, out of more than just the absence of war. And it's going to mean something in your discussion different to each of you, and that's okay. And it's okay that it can be, at times, different to different people. But for us, it's mostly meant a way of life that solves problems through dialogue, works to balance and expand respectful relations, even when people disagree. Millions of people have signed a pledge to inculcate the culture of peace into their everyday lives. And so, an institutionalized framework for such a thing, this is where we believe you all can play a part and play an historic role. As a group of concerned citizens, we've engaged in a process, not only intended to institute a culture of peace commission in Ashland, but we mean to model it. We know we could go to voters, get it approved, but as you told you in the packets, we wanna work together to come up with something that works. And I believe it's in our collective wisdom to come up with something that works for everyone. And in our individual meetings that we held with most of you over the last month, we worked hard to resist charging forward, learning to apply the very principles inherent in the culture of peace to our own process. We've listened deeply and reflected individually as a group on your suggestions and your wise input gleaned from years of working within city government. It's convinced me and all of us that we want the same thing. And so, it's about commonality. Few disagree that we want to embody a culture of peace. Adrian Rich once said, "We all go to sleep at night dreaming of a common language." In many ways, Ashland has a culture of peace. Those who gather at the Peace for Feast, the annual commemorations of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, mediation school programs, compassionate learning trainings, restorative justice circles, local shows like Immense Possibilities help us listen and be more connected. We've been a member of the Mayors for, Global Mayors for Peace since nineteen ninety-eight. So, we are here to suggest that the quality of life business is in our livelihood, and that we have listened, that there are ways to attract young people, that there are complications and limitations in the current commission process. So, what do we do? We wish to hold off on a vote or permanent type of commission, to form an independent Ashland culture of peace, representative of all the areas in the peace wheel in your materials, education, business, culture, science, law, the others. We wanna show through a track record, have a liaison from city council work with this commission, a separate commission, not a city commission. Establish a track record, have a one-year trial period to implement some of the visions of such a commission, but without the formal commission structure of the city. This will allow us to do, as Gandhi said, "An experiment with truth." And it's our belief that why we need a more institutionalized format to this, and that will come. So, over the year, we can all see what a state of the culture of peace in Ashland report could be, how it can present constructive, non-judgment, and build relationships and understanding. We can hear many other things, but deeply believe that collectively, from the decades of experience here and our decades of working with a culture of peace, that we think that we can make this happen with a formal support of the city. And what I urge you to do is I have specific recommendations that relate to some of your concerns, that if you call on me for, or someone from our group for questions during your period, then I can describe a little more in detail, a few things around how a memorandum of understanding with a separate organization could work. So, I am going to wrap up and say thank you, and, and that is with this spirit that we move forward.
Thank you.
And I have copies of the full remarks that I'd like to hand out, if that's appropriate.
Yeah, you can just give them to the assistant city recorder. She'll pass them around. Okay. Now, we move to item two on the agenda, which is looking at the view.
Um, Mr. Cottrell, thanks for bringing your attention. On Mr. Lowman's request, we've had an executive...
Any questions? Herb, you were, well...
David.
You're, it's the two of you, but I was, I was talking to Herb in my meeting. I just wanted, are you, are they tuned in to what you and I talked about?
Oh, oh, yes. They'll do a better job than I think.
You guys are amazing.
Sorry.
David Wick, uh, 2560, Eagle Creek Lane, Ashland.
So, the situation is that it appears, and it appeared from my conversation with Herb and Patricia, that maybe this, um, this concept had morphed into another stage. And I'd just like the council to be aware of basically what you, what you were suggesting or proposing that the council do. Can you do that in two minutes?
Can do it in, definitely in two minutes.
Okay. Would you do that, please?
Yeah. The idea at this point is to go a step certainly beyond just a theoretical proclamation about the state of peace, but to allow, uh, to work with an organization, the CPI Ashland, Culture of Peace Initiative Ashland, to put together a representative, uh, culture of peace commission from all the sectors, business, law, faith, community, the other sectors within the community, and then be able to have those groups spend a year as a pilot project, if you will, in which they are able to engage in making recommendations on conflict resolution. Certain things that were in the ordinance that we proposed originally can be done this way, less formally, to where they can bring some of the best ideas around the world to, to, to be available, help coordinate city groups involved in peacemaking and conflict resolution, co-sponsor a monthly peace event, provide these resources, help people deal with it when they bring matters before the council, or the council thinks it would benefit from going to this culture of peace commission. It could be referred through just a memorandum of understanding, so, one type of agreement that could, um, which I think came out of discussions with Greg and some other people who mentioned MOUs and the way it works with some other organizations, is set up, uh, something that formalizes it more than just a group off to the side, but involves the formal support for the, um, process. So, the formality, we would say, is essential to provide some authority and buy-in throughout the city for a pilot project, and that we then can designate at a meeting, a year from now, we can look at the reports generated, the activities done, a dispute or two that that a commission got involved in, that was, how did that work? How was that beneficial? And we can evaluate it a year down the line, to what degree should this be further institutionalized, if it should, and what are the options to do so? And/or maintain the status as it is, this is working? It could be anything at that point in time. But I think it takes the pressure off the notion of establishing a formal city commission dealing with a formal representation or any of the, you know, their minimum of the costs associated with that, the potential restrictions. Some of the commission, some of the council members spoke of flexibility, and the key that this could provide even more flexibility to an organization like this to come forward. So, we are excited, based upon all the discussions, that we can bring some of this together and perhaps set up an event, uh, set up a, an entity that functions in, um, in this type of manner, that has a relationship, but I think builds on, show me, show me what can be done over a year and how this would relate. And I think that gives something that more people can agree on.
Now, sort of let me add the part of this conceptualizing, as I remember it from our conversation with Patricia and Herb. I have had and have some profound reservations about having something that has this kind of ideological, almost spiritual quality to it, being incorporated into the structure of the city. But I think it's very much in the spirit and the creativity of this community to explore the possibility. And so, what I was, I think what you, you suggested was that I, as mayor, might issue a proclamation in which I supported and encouraged this year-long pilot of the basic concept of what you're talking about. And that would, that would balance these, these trade-offs between how closely do you hold this in, in, within the city structure, and how does this, the city still give support to something that I think is consistent with a lot of our values?
Yeah, I just, I do wanna add that the United States government has signed up to create a culture of peace through the United Nations and voted for it. I really don't think it's a spiritual, I mean, I could argue why it's a, anything is spiritual, but it, it really is not meant at all to be...
No, I was just saying, what, I was just expressing my particular relationship to what we're talking about here, so we have that out on the table. Do any of you wanna ask?
Just because basically what we're talking about is what already, you know, a key concern and a key element is the quality of life, the quality of life that we have here, and well-being, the greatest well-being. It's another vehicle to, how do we enhance what we have? We've got tremendous amount of great, we've got, it's building, taking place as technology and what's going on in the now or too, but it brings another lens, another, you know, ever moving forward, evolving, because we got the big issues coming up. And it's also, as a community, how do we think about these things? How do we approach some of these things? So, it's another conscious vehicle to assist that. There's also, frankly, it's a leading edge apart that, that will be the model for other cities. It also is a draw, um, in tourism, and it helps another branding level of Ashland, that it becomes real attractive and say, "This is a leading edge city," and it, it works in that way, too. I just wanna say that.
Counselors, do you have questions you'd like to ask? Carol, do you have a question?
I do. I have a question for Eric, um, with regard to the MOU. And you're saying to sort of, this would be used to prove what you can do and accomplishments. But one question I have is, what metrics do you think would be appropriate to, for us to expect from you? I, I really think that would be important for me to know, um, when you set this forth. What metrics do you wanna be judged upon? What expectations do you have of the city? And then, what we would have of you, I think would be really important to have in that MOU.
And I, I think that any MOU in connection with that would be the development of a comprehensive state of the culture of peace in Ashland report. One that I'd like to say is constructive, non-judgment, its aim is building relationships, its task is to be inclusive, forward-thinking, reflecting really the key elements of peace building. And so, I think the report, the kinds of recommendations, the availability to engage, bring a skill set to particular conflicts, and to help, uh, give you specific, um, expansion of resources, uh, that can be used by citizens and by government itself. So, I would say we would list, and I'd say this is the language we would work on until everyone's comfortable. I mean, we're really excited based upon our meetings and discussions, because we really feel like it's something that we can all come to some language that we're comfortable on, and we'd like to work toward that.
Can you clarify what you're thinking in terms of timing in an MOU? I mean, I, I love what you're talking about in terms of developing a track record that utilizes our collective wisdom. I think that's absolutely the path that we need to go down. But it would seem to me that doing an, an MOU at the top of this process might be premature. I mean, we, that sort of, um, suggests or prejudges what might happen in, in the year of activity, whereas if we do a proclamation and maybe some formal participation from in-house a person, that, that then there are, there is the era of official participation that then could feed into that year of activity. I don't know how we put together an MOU of the topic.
I, I, and maybe, and we haven't fully engaged in the full discussion about the timing. For myself, I would say that we should formulate the, this commission, show you the representatives and the skill sets that are on it. What do we have to present in that way? At which time propose the MOU language coming from that entity? And I think at that point, the value will speak for itself.
Yeah, so the idea could be an outgrowth of...
It could be an outgrowth of the creation and the collective wisdom there with the liaison. I understood you would be perhaps willing to work with us a little on this.
Right. Certainly, there may be others who...
Who would wanna liaison to...
...out if, if the council decides to.
We just want to know that, um, get a sense at the appropriate point, maybe it's a two-step vote, if it is a vote, or just a proclamation. We'd like to see the council behind it. And I think that it may be the first, um, you can even informally, well, we think from your meetings, there's general support for, for the general notion. So, what we would like to do is invite people in, create that, and then work with someone on the, on a proposed MOU, and then I think we can come up with something that you'll see as valuable.
The, what's really wonderful here is we have the opportunity of creating something new, and not just as we talked about in your, from your feedback, which is so valuable, not just a, a commission, but it's a new entity of a city, and it's the community and city government, and how we work together to create something that's really significant. Because, yeah, as we talked about before, there's some other peace commissions, several around the country, but this is something that is even more unique. So, that's why this is, you know, very exciting to, to venture, because of our conversations, we learned and said, "Okay, there's, here's a new open." It's really wonderful. That's really exciting.
Rich?
Uh, thank you for your attitude. I'm glad to hear that you've, uh, reached the conclusion that there is an alternative approach from what you had originally proposed, which I think was problematic, to be quite honest. Question I have is, in the meantime, what sort of demands will, will there be on city staff time, which is very limited and precious? And also, what expectations may there be from a pilot project in terms of, you know, you talked about putting on events, uh, those things sometimes cost money. What is the, the funding source for that? And I would hope that that would not necessarily during the pilot period of time, there be an expectation that it be taxpayer resources?
I, I think both of, um, those are very important concerns. I think that we want to, um, uh, we, we really don't expect there to be any drag or pull on city staff, being not a formal commission. There is not a need for the staff time and minutes in the usual process. I'm a lawyer. I'll draft, help draft up language on an MOU. It'll go pretty quickly, I think, when you look at it, it'll keep it very simple, and it would be something, I think, that won't take a lot of in-house time. I think as to the events, we, um, uh, we don't really anticipate asking the city for a penny during this first year of the pilot project, and the MOU could indicate that. I feel that we will be able to have sources of revenue. We have a lot of volunteer help, as you saw. We saw, you saw the people, hundreds of people who thought this was a great idea. Well, we're gonna call upon those hundreds and have been calling upon them, and we'll put together something to you that will make the city, we think, look forward-thinking, amazing as it is, and I think that you will then, um, benefit from that, and we don't anticipate asking for a penny from the city.
And I think that the only other part would be having the representatives, as we talked about, perhaps, uh, the council was, and also a, having the reality report into you. I'll go ahead, second.
Steph?
Um, were you thinking more of local projects, um, the first year that you...
Absolutely. This, this is a local project.
Yeah, this is.
It, it feeds, um, it draws in inspiration from other places that have tried things, things that have worked, you know? You try to grab the best that we can from other examples. But this is not an entity that intends to take political stances on issues. It's not an entity, it, it, that's why it's a culture of peace communit, uh, commission. Not different from even some of the peace commissions that have existed in other cities, that frankly, some of them arose out of the peace and disarmament movement of the nineteen-seventies and early eighties. This is out of the culture of peace, which is what can a local city do to foster right relations and continue to have conflict resolution skills and techniques, and really have the city be a beacon on the hill, if you will, for itself. And so, this doesn't deal with a war in a far-off place and a, uh, political issue. This is very much dealing with local issues.
That makes me feel better. Looking at the city of Cambridge and New Haven and some of the examples that were in the packet, they do deal a lot with international issues that I think we'd be premature for us, too.
Yeah, we're, we're very focused.
So, thank you for that.
Others will learn from us, you know, that there's others who are very interested in what we do as a model, but we're not, we're focused here.
Were you thinking of working with us tools in some of the same models that they were, um, using, the conflict resolution models?
Absolutely. Working with mediation works, bringing the resources that are already there, people doing things, and really highlighting them up for the rest of the community to celebrate at times like John said in his State of the Union, we, State of the Union.
City.
Pushing you up there, John.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just know Mitch McConnell for it.
Yeah. You know, that it is a way to deal with our quality of life, and I think that, uh, that's the education we all get when we deal with this issue of what is peace, what is culture of peace. So, it's still even for us who've been working on peace issues for a long time, a learning process. And I love that we can do it at home and bring it to this level, because I think it's that relationship that what I talked about to the council last time, that reboot, that connectedness that we have with each other, that is our greatest asset.
I would also see that this helps to, um, acknowledge, identify those that are doing tremendous, we got tremendous, um, top organizations up and others who are doing great work. And how do we, and but under the radar, we're not really acknowledging the work that they do. So, how do we raise that awareness? How do we raise that profile about what already exists here, which is tremendous? And, and also finding each other, because else we're siloed, so that's another part of, to be part of the, what we'd be doing.
Do any other counselors want to ask questions? I'm gonna, before we get to a giving direction stage, I'm gonna ask all of you who haven't spoken to sort of say what your take is on this. Rich?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to hear you say, and I take you at your word, that this is not a political Some people who've looked into this, your critics, would say, uh, I'm just gonna be honest with you, they felt that this was, uh, an attempt to set up some sort of shadow government in our community. That might seem laughable, but that's out there. So, that, you know, some of the argumentation that I was given before the meeting, um, document titled "Need and Roles for City Commitment and Leadership," flat-out said that there is a problem with incivility on, on the council, that the council struggled to devise portable policies for homeless population, uh, the council was intimidated, almost at gunpoint to show up considerations. It sounds to me that the argumentation, uh, for this is sort of political. So, again, I take you at your word. I think that's great. The other issues that advocacy says that there will be an economic benefit to the community, I think it would be important to somehow quantify that, other than anecdotal evidence. If that's going to be a major reason that we have this type of thing, um, let's try to come up with something other than, well, we think it will. Maybe it will.
Thank you.
Yeah. And last thing, if this is a quality of life thing, um, it's important to make sure that you define what the expectations are. How do you define peace? How do you define, um, conflict, all those things? Because I think that if we were to take this to, on the streets right now, if you were to attempt some sort of initiative, people would be asking, "Well, how do you define it? What are the ultimate outcomes?" And I think you've done a lot to get to that point tonight, that it's important, that the politists, uh, the politics have to be stripped from this, I think, for it to be successful.
Well, thank you. And I appreciate the comments a lot and frank comments, uh, in connection with that, because as you may have a perception, or someone may have a perception along the shadow government, or something that comes out of there, might be the same way the citizens, citizens have a perspective or a perception of what happened with the gun issue, or what happened with some other issue. Everybody works from perceptions and misperceptions. And what this entity is intending to do is to continually educate everyone involved with it, and I put myself at the top of the learning curve, always in that, is way, are ways in which we can communicate better and avoid those misunderstandings. I wanna, now that you put that down, I wanna include in this year, an ongoing sort of look at the economic benefits, so that we can have, uh, more data and information as to what, what might be a benefit, what we can work toward in that regard. Thank you.
Greg?
Well, I, uh, I appreciate a meeting with David and Irene. She's right there. And it's true, I did advocate for them to step back from the government structure a little bit and create an independent body. I'm sure I wasn't the only one that, that advocated for that. My experience in working within the city is that it will provide you, I think, more flexibility and the ability to make your own decisions about things and how you want to do things. And I think it would be, make you a stronger organization, and I think there are some interesting things your, your group can do. My interest in the MOU is, and I, we can make another vehicle if we want, but I do like the idea of the city, uh, appointing a liaison, like we do with the Mount Ashland Association and some of these other outside government bodies. I thought the MOU would allow us to formalize and structure it in terms of what the city is doing, what our limitations are, what your group will do in return, so that it So that if anybody has any questions or concerns, like some that Council Rosenthal brought up, they can always go to it and find out, okay, this is exactly what the city said their level of involvement would be, right? So that's why I understand Pam, where you're coming from with maybe an end result anyway here, but this would be an initial document, however we call it, I'm not stuck to it. But I think it would be good to have that. And in that way, the council will know also whomever is appointed as liaison, what kind of reports we should expect back, what kind of actions they will be limited to. Are they an ex parte member? Are they a non-voting member? Are they expected to be a voting member? What types of reports do we receive back? All those little details I think are important. And then I think it, I think it's an excellent idea to give it this year or a year and just see how it evolves and, and see where we take it from there. And like you said, it, it may be, and I suspect you'll find that you're better off as an outside commission, working throughout the entire city as a non-political entity. Then you would be restrained by some of the things within the city that you'd be restrained by. But it's worth taking a look at, so I'm interested in, in doing that. And I would be interested in seeing it on, seeing at least the MOU or whatever we do with it on a regular agenda. And I'd be happy to, to work with staff and craft it.
So a lot of mixed feelings of what this is and what it's supposed to do. I didn't have the time last year to meet with you guys. Just a couple of things that maybe the MOU would do at open meetings law, which it always makes me wonder if you guys, if you're getting together to discuss things and other things and it's sanctioned by the city, then how much can happen, you know, that else to deal with? Maybe Greg brought that up. You know, I'd be willing to give it a try. I think it's, it would be a very interesting committee or commission and especially if you're given to screen resolutions. My interest has always been, mind you, which has time frames. And you have a very short timeframe to do something because if something doesn't like it, you only have a certain order of time and then you always look for other stuff. So just a lot of questions like that that I'll discuss with you two. Good, yeah, we're in about that. But all in all, it doesn't look favorable.
Carol, what are your thoughts on going to go from here?
Well, I really like the proposal and I think suggestions from fellow councils about having an MOU is an excellent idea. I would also encourage you to go to the school board and you want to do a lot of work with young people and I really like that part of what you're doing and want to do. I think that's just critical for our community. So I would encourage you to go to the school board and find out where they're at and what's happening there. But I, I support this going forward as a, a relationship that's bound in and through a, an MOU.
Pam?
You mentioned the State of the City. And one of the messages that we really wanted to convey in the State of the City is the city proper is a small part of what makes Ashland Ashland. Much more of that is the activities of the residents and organizations and the big communities and on and on and off the businesses that every single day do things to make life work here in Ashland. And so I, I am, I think, I know that we all join in, in the spirit of what you want to achieve in this. And I'm very interested in seeing it move forward in this first year as an entity with city support via, for example, a proclamation and possible participation. And I want to see what happens out of, again, out of that collective wisdom of the first year. I think it would be premature to put together a MOU at the top of this process because you don't have any idea yet, like, as you bring in community partners, how this fish will shape up, what you're going to want to do, what you're going to want out of the city, whether you even want a formal city relationship. You know, a city, city, when you're, as, as I think Greg mentioned, when you're under the city auspices, you have fundraising issues, you have membership issues, it may be that the first year really sorts itself out in a, in a far different way. So I would suggest that we, we forward with a proclamation and if you want a city council number two participate in this initial year, that we, we forward on that as well. And that we see what flies. We see how the group moves, what's on the agenda, what you get support for. And then out of that, look towards a possible MOU much farther down the line when we actually know what we're trying to accomplish out there.
Steph, would you?
I think there are very many positive things that if you can develop out of this, especially if all parts of the community are involved. I worked for a long time with peer counseling in schools, so I found that a very beneficial program. I think emphasizing what specific programs you want to do and not getting too theoretical would be an important part. There are some commissions that already exist, like the Housing and Social Service Commission, which you might consider if there's an opening happening in Ashland. I think it would be real important to work with the Chamber of Commerce. I think that there is, they do a lot in terms of letting people know the five camps. And I know there are already many wonderful events that, that exist in terms of of the types of programs you would like.
Before I, to see if anyone else wants to make some statements, here's where I see this thing moving. I see us preparing some things to bring to a council, to council action out of a business meeting agenda in the fairly near future. The, the part about a mayor's proclamation, supporting this venture, this product, what would be, the first year would be like a project, to demonstrate and explore the possibilities of the concept, essentially start proving out the concept on the local level in the community is something that I would happily support with, with some enthusiasm. The council may also want to express its interest and its support for this. And I think that could be done in various ways. It could be an action of the council. It could be, we might jointly develop a set of expectations for the start, the kicking, the launching of this venture. And clearly there needs to be some checking in, probably more than just at the end of the year, reporting back on what's, what's going on, maybe quarterly, something like that. And then, and, and assessment at the end of the year of how you, what you think has worked, where, where you think next steps are, and the council interacting with the members of this group. That seems to me to be sort of the direction in which we're moving. Pushing for an MOU or not an MOU, if we really need to, I don't want to use the word fight, but whatever you, PeaceNix use in the, at the council meeting. I'm sorry. Humor is part of the term. But at, at the council meeting, if we have to work out the issue of the MOU, then we have to work it out. I think expectations initially is what you want to start with. And then an MOU may grow organically out of this process. So anyway, let's see if Greg and, and Rich wanted to add anything at this point.
Well, my only suggestion would be that, well, when it comes back to city council, it just comes back with a suggestion from staff about which, which way would best memorialize, formalize, whichever way you want to call it, what the, say, the ground rules, so to speak, what they are in terms of what the city will do and what our expectations are. And then we can debate about it at, at a regular meeting about what form we want that to be and whether it's a proclamation, MOU, whatever it is. But I think to get, it seems like to me, to get support from the council, we want to be able to say, yes, these are the things that, that we will do with the liaison position and these are the things that we insist upon, like the open meetings and things like that. So I guess I'll just see fairly open-ended and wait for it to come back with some staff suggestions.
Rich, do you want to?
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Well, then.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I think those are things we can work with the staff and come make this quite easy. I think that Greg's concerns about, let's have expectations with anyone looking in so we're clear as the understanding what the year might look like is just a good idea, whatever we call it. And just that we've set up this relationship and we're doing this creative experiment about this year is, I think, of something that we can run with in the sense of it looks good for the city like this. It overcomes prejudices and other things. And not to call you out on that, John, but the comment about PeaceNix based upon that is a very common thing that people, when they hear the term, come to. And I'm afraid that those are the things that we hope through establishing a culture of peace, that we can overcome those attitudes that the people who work for locally, nationally, internationally, for relationship building around the planet through the word peace, that it isn't a politicized word. And I, you know, and I pre, anyway, so.
For the record, Eric, I withdraw the use of that word. I would say it only facetiously, but also for the record, I want to point out a couple of things. Number one, that's the subtly veiled threat to go to an initiative, we don't do what you want, doesn't strike me as, as a peace building step. And then this thing that, that Rich brought out, which I hadn't seen before, has a highly politicized tone to it when you're trying, when you want to work together with the council. So, so frankness with each other is going to be part of this too, and I welcome that.
And absolutely. And let me state for the record that I saw when you said it, that you knew that you were being liked about it and I knew you valued the work of the people in this room and that you value peace building. I just used it as an example because that's what I think a year from now, we'll really be pleased with our progress in the city.
Thank you.
And if I also may say, just thank everyone, all of you who are meeting and learning, there's been a learning evolution together and that's what it's really about. I also will boldly say to just be aware of this moment because it may be historic.
Thank you. Point well taken. So with the council's permission, I will proceed with staff drawing on interests that have been expressed by various members of the council and shaping something to bring back to a council meeting in the fairly near future. I'm thinking a couple of meetings out where we can, we can focus and clarify the council's intention. And then what I do will be related to that as mayor. Is that okay with everyone? Thank you very much. And thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.